So we're going to call this meeting to order. It is sometime that my watch will say.
6:09.
6:10, 6:09. Let the record show all board members are present. If you guys would please rise with us and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so board, do you have an agenda before you? Can I get a motion to approve it?
So move.
Ms. Ware and Dr. Fegley approve that motion. So let's move right on into our recognitions. Dr. Benyon.
All right, thank you very much. The first recognition that we have is our Southeast Middle School Principals Association. It's a very long acronym, but this is for Garrett Cook and Haley Russell. We're recently honored by the Southeast Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals as the principal and the assistant principal of the year. These two dedicated educators are very well deserving, and we are just so thankful that they call CGPS home. And congratulations to you both. If you guys could come up and we could take a picture as a board, we would appreciate that.
We had a photo op earlier in the month, so we wanted to definitely honor them at the board meeting.
Next is our first year for our memorial scholarship. It's the Keith Adams Memorial Scholarship. Keith was a former teacher at the middle school that had passed away last year, and this go, the scholarship is for $1,000, and it goes to Marlette Southall. She received it. If I could have Keith's, Keith Adams' wife and son Gretchen and Karen to come up here and take a picture with us as well, we'd appreciate it. And thank you again for the scholarship for these kids. It's our Leadership Academy recognition, and I'll just turn it over to you.
Yeah, so our Leadership Academy cohort this year consisted of eight of our faculty members, spread out through various certified positions. I'm going to ask them, as I call them out, to come on up here, and then we'll share just a little bit more information. We have Sarah Hahn from Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Austin Borden from Alma Schrader Elementary, Marcia Medlin from Central Middle School, Trevor Moorhead from Clifford Elementary, Elizabeth Lukifer from CHS, and Ms. Ashley Radicki also from Central High School. And Dr. Benyon, actually what I wanted to do was allow them a brief moment here at the mic, just to talk about one of the experiences or something they've reflected on since Leadership Academy, and then possibly share what topic they talked about at our Action Research Project. So Austin, we'll start at the end, and then Jamie O'Passion, the mine grinder. Just one thing to reflect on from Leadership Academy and your topic you presented onto the board.
I wasn't prepared to give a speech tonight, but...
That's what leadership's all about.
I think just one of the biggest takeaways was being able to look at the other aspiring leaders throughout the district and being able to work with them from all the other buildings, as well as being able to understand what all the other assistant superintendents and everyone from the board office does was something that I could take away from it. And then my topic that I did was standard-based grading, which is what third and fourth grade will be going into next year.
I'm Sarah Hahn. Also was not prepared for this, but my major takeaway from the Leadership Academy was just to like have, be very grateful for the leaders that we have and to meet new people, other aspiring leaders, and collaborate and think about new ideas and kind of get a plan moving forward. But my topic was peer tutoring in our ICU structure for the junior high, just to try to utilize all of the brilliant minds that we have to help others. So that's where I was at.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Lukifer, and I teach mathematics at the high school. And I love the Leadership Academy in that I came from a very rural Arkansas background when I moved here, and so it was wonderful to see all of the dynamics and all of the things that it takes to run a school of this size. And we have some very awesome people in the background working tirelessly to make this the school district that it is. And my research project was how to overcome or learning strategies in a low socioeconomic backgrounds and the fact that all students have the ability to learn. And just thank you guys for supporting us through this. Michelle, or thank you.
Hello, my name's Ashley Radicki. I am a PE teacher at Cape Central High School. My big takeaway from the Leadership Academy, it was just really interesting to see the behind-the-scenes of what all goes on over here at the board office and being able to shadow some administrators was very interesting. My action research project was talking about having a therapy dog in the school system and how they can positively impact the school and the school climate.
Awesome. Well, Dr. Benyon and all board members, this group was fantastic. They were a lot of fun to meet with every month. We learned just as much from them as they do from us. So if we could give them a round of applause.
So this is a student from each building selected based on service to others, leadership and scholarship, and parents celebrate with their kids too. Please stand up, take pictures with them also, so we'll go into that.
All right, first up Alma Schrader. Ryla Hale, 4th grade daughter of Cicely and Ben Hale. Ryla is a bright and enthusiastic 4th grader who always gives her best effort in and out of the classroom. Known for her kindness, determination, and positive attitude, Ryla is a role model to classmates and is truly deserving of the Terrific Tiger Award. She has represented Alma Schrader in the best way possible. Blanchard Elementary, Drake Winans, 1st grade, son of Scarlett and Derek Winans. Drake is a focused, serious, and dedicated student who strives every day to do his very best. He pushes himself daily to do better in all subject areas. He has an easygoing attitude which makes him so much fun to teach. Drake cares deeply for others, and that is what makes him a truly great friend to all. Do we have twins here? Blanchard Elementary, Mia Winans, 1st grade, daughter of Scarlett and Derek Winans. Mia is such a joy to work with and is a ray of sunshine to everyone. She brightens every room she walks into with her winning smile. She is hardworking and is very motivated to always do her best. She has a heart of gold and will help anyone that needs it. Clifford Elementary, Sophie Ribbing, 4th grade, daughter of Tara and Tyler Ribbing. Sophie is a joy to have in class. She consistently follows the rules and encourages her classmates to do the same. She always puts forth her best effort and is eager to help others when they need assistance with their work. Sophie is a shining example of a Clifford Terrific Tiger. Way to go, Sophie. Franklin Elementary, Dream Gray, 1st grade, daughter of Jasa Elliott. Franklin is so proud to recognize our 1st grade Terrific Tiger, Dream Gray. Jefferson Elementary, Aria Woods, 2nd grade, daughter of Jamila Woods. Jefferson would like to recognize Aria Woods for her incredible effort and determination this year. She has worked hard to grow in both reading and math, always striving to improve and make gains. Her dedication, perseverance, and positive attitude have truly made a difference. Aria is also a kind and caring classmate, always willing to lend a helping hand to others. Central Middle School, Malaya Parks, 5th grade, daughter of Jay Shell Curtis. Malaya is a 5th grader and is part of our student leadership team and Roaring Tigers Choir. She's an intelligent, confident, and strong young lady who is a proven leader of her peers. Keep up the great work, Malaya, and congratulations. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Brandon Freeze, 7th grade, son of Christopher Freeze. Brandon has had tremendous personal growth this school year. He has stepped up as a leader in the classroom and is often the first to raise his hand to answer a question. He breezes through the challenges that he has given and completes it with excellence every time. He thrives with difficult concepts and always has a desire to learn more. He's a dependable student and a role model to his peers. Central High School, Amy Caldwell, 12th grade, daughter of Shelby and James Caldwell. Amy is truly a sweet, kind-hearted student. Her genuine compassion for others, positive spirit, and thoughtful nature make her a joy to be around and an inspiration to everyone she meets. She is one of the first recipients of the Be the Change Scholarship. This scholarship is awarded to students who offer kindness without expecting anything in return. Amy always shows up with a positive attitude and exhibits outstanding character in everything she does. She makes CHS proud. Central Academy, Jonell Gibson, 12th grade, son of Joanna and Johnny Gibson. And then from April, the Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Yasmin King Carter, 7th grade, daughter of Kiara Selvi Carter. Yasmin is always looking for ways to help out. She has helped the classroom with cleaning up and even cleans up the cafeteria. She always has a smile and is friendly towards others. Congratulations, Yasmin.
Next up is information, proposals, comments from the audience. Mr. Payne, any tonight?
No requests from the community.
All right, cool. We will toss out just public participation at board meetings, requests to place an item on the agenda or to address the board should be submitted in writing at least five days in advance of the regular board meeting to Mr. Payne here at the board office. It's outlined in policies, BDDH and KC on the website, so thank you guys very much. All right, we'll move on into our informational reports. So first up, board president's report. So a couple of things I'll throw out. First off, congratulations to all the graduates and the families. Awesome to get to see everybody get out there and achieve graduation and get to move on and go out into the world. So it was a great night getting to see everybody graduate and glad we didn't have it outside like you wanted to, so it was all right. The long-range community plan meetings we had last week, while they weren't overly highly attended, they were still, the few of us that were there, it was really nice to get to meet with IDS, go through some of the things, see some of the pictures, opportunities as we're building that long-range plan. So excited moving into this year as we get to take action on that. I'll toss out too July 11th Booster Club Golf Tournament. It's always a lot of fun. So sign up, capetigersboosters.com, so go sign up and go. The foundation also with their alumni group, with Ms. Understall, they're having a mix-and-mingles. They're trying to build up the Cape alumni after the tournament, so it can be a completely all-day affair. And after you get done playing golf, you can hang out at the country club and not for sure what else is going to happen, karaoke, or singing, or dancing, or who knows, but we'll see. So it should be fun. And last off, did want to say thanks to Dr. Crowley and Brandon Bradshaw. They needed somebody to load test their bridge green, so I went out there today and swung for it. Did go out and play around in the welding facility today, just kind of looking around and met places fantastic, I mean tangible skills we're going to put into kids, community. That's a fantastic place. We need to see it under power and get it up and going, but that's a cool facility. So that's all I had. I'll pass on superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just want to say I'd like to congratulate the classes 2025 on their graduation. Also take the time to thank Ms. Scheller. She's out in the hallway. They did a fantastic job at the graduation and truly appreciate her leadership. I'd also like to brag on our JAG program. This is wonderful. We just got this news last week at Cape Central Academy. This year we had 100% graduation rate for students involved in JAG. That program is working and it's being very impactful at Central Academy, so really excited about that. This is just one of the many impressive examples of performance by the program. Ms. Burley will be coming to update you over the summer. She's going to talk a little bit more about that data that we received last week. It's very impressive of what's happening at Central Academy and the JAG program. We have your young ladies participating, we have our young ladies participating in Girls State this summer and eight young men who will attend Boys State. The event will be hosted on Lindenwood's campus. This program focuses on leadership, CIPIC engagement, and public service. I'd like to also wish everyone a last week of school. I see some teachers out there that are excited about that. We have one and a half more days this week, and I hope that they all go smoothly as our students and staff look forward to the summer break. And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Next up, CIPIC program evaluations. So CIPIC LEAD 5 updates.
That's Lindsey.
Yes ma'am, Ms. Lindsey.
So, CIPIC LEAD 5, the goal was to develop a long-range fiscal plan to address employee compensation. This is a long-range goal. We have a target to increase certified base salary 2% every year. And there are lots of action steps that are involved in that, mainly analyzing our revenues and expenditures to see if it's feasible. And so just kind of put some information in the review about how we do that. And we're also dealing with minimum wage requirements now, so I feel like just ongoing. There's always going to be something to watch and look at. We research comparable districts and we use that by using this NSTA Annual Salary and Benefit Report. I've looked it there for you if you would like to take a look at it. Currently, we are number four in Southeast Region for starting teacher salary, which I feel like is really good. This is also done with our Salary and Welfare Committee to solicit feedback from our staff. We have ongoing discussions with them. And we've also established a minimum fund balance procedure, which is good for the district and helps in this as well. Currently, our minimum fund balance that was approved in November is 22%. We are at, we ended last year at 37%, so we're well above that. Communication with the staff, I did not do that this year, but last year, Dr. Benyon and I, we asked all the buildings to communicate where our plan was, and I met with Salary and Welfare. This year it's been a little different, but have plans to visit all the buildings and talk with staff regarding salary and the district's finances in general. And it will be something that's ongoing that we will monitor and continue to update every single year. I put a little bit of history on there where we started back in '22, '23. You know, we were still getting SRO funds, so our revenue looked a lot different, and we were able to do some different things with our resources. So we had a couple of years when we had some pretty large increases for the district. And in '22, '23, we increased the base. All of the salary increases have been going to the base of salary. And what this has done on the teacher salary schedule, if you look at the step one and then you go all the way to the end of it, the progression, it's really closed the gap there. So that's something that we'll want to work on because we have a long-range goal, let it be larger, so that you have the potential to make that money the longer that you're for the life of your career. In '23, '24, we increased the base 3,000. Now in '24, '25, we did 2%, which still means the CIPIC needs in '25, '26. The recommendation again is 2%. I put for action items that is ongoing, that we'll continue to analyze data, and I would like to work on developing more of a financial tool that we can forecast out the increases to see where we will be to help us in turn. Overall, I think that we've done really well, so that our overall performance is above average because we are meeting the goal that we have set for ourselves. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Career Ladder Program Evaluation. Dr. Beck, I believe.
Yep, so this might look familiar because last month you all approved the application to participate in next year's round of Career Ladder. This is actually current year, so this is how we actually fared in terms of completion for the people that were eligible for each stage. I'm not going to read all of it, I'm just going to do a summary, but obviously Career Ladder, the matching grant program, it's a 60-40, 40% of the contribution comes at the district level, 60% from the state. So we had 29 total participating teachers out of 34 initial applications. Those 29 were completers of Career Ladder. So stage one was seven, which is 1,500, stage two, eight, 3,000, stage three, 14, which is a $5,000 stipend. So total district contribution was $41,800, and then the state kicked in another $62,700. This is a great program for our teachers. It's a win-win for the district when you can only have to contribute 40% of a match. We'll take that any day. As long as the state continues to fund it at that level, we don't see any issue with continued participation. Last month's approval for that application was actually a 60% increase from what we applied for the year before because we're adding that teacher mentoring piece. So we hope that our staff continue to utilize this in the future because it's a pretty easy way to add to that annual base salary that contributes towards their retirement. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beck. Okay, next up, Community Teachers Association Report. Mr. Loppi.
Mr. Loppi, is this your final meeting with us?
It is.
Oh, how sad.
Yes, for sure. So, uh, it might be. Why not? Thanks. I knew someone would tell me, right? All right, we'll get this shout-out started, shall we? Starting at Alma Schrader, shout-out to their fellow 3rd and 4th grade teachers for getting through MAP testing and working so hard to prepare our students, especially 3rd grade, for taking it the first time ever. So proud of our team this year and all we have done. Another shout-out goes to the entire staff. They welcomed nearly 50 incoming kindergartners into the Alma Schrader family with our first kindergarten open house. Our new families toured the building, met our amazing staff, ate a cookie with their new friends, and signed to be a Tiger. Each family took home a yard sign to let everyone know how excited they are to be a Tiger next year. They also want to give a shout-out to the incredible and unbelievable TAs for everything that they do for the heart, for the students and staff. They truly are the heart of sweet home Alma Schrader. Another shout-out goes to Mrs. May. She goes above and beyond to make sure her students are learning and having fun while doing it. Her students love her and love learning. At Blanchard, shout-out to Bethany Phelps, who works so hard to get us ready for testing season. Jessica Patton-Gil for planning an awesome career day experience for Blanchard students. At Central Academy, shout-out to Ms. Jen, Ms. Ruth, and Ms. Libby, the cafeteria staff who work so hard to offer healthy and delicious food. We appreciate each of them. Shout-out to Ms. Tillman, our front office staff, who runs the show efficiently and effectively and kindly. This person also want to give a shout-out to Ms. Beggs and Mr. McMullin. They keep us all going with positive attitudes and support. All CA teachers and staff, everyone supports and cares for each other while keeping the students our priority. At Clifford, shout-out to Ms. Amy Mays, who will be leaving us to enjoy her well-earned retirement. She has always gone above and beyond, and her knowledge and expertise are invaluable as a reading specialist. Her absence will be felt greatly, but we wish her all the best in this next season. At the CTC, thank you to the front office staff, Ms. Stacy Pope, Ms. Christine Smith, Ms. Megan Martin, and Ms. Lindsey Blies for working hard to keep CTC running smoothly. The end of the year is very hectic time with new enrollment, testing, POs, student payment deadlines, et cetera. At the Early Childhood Center, congratulations to Ms. Lori on her Support Service Staff Member of the Year Award. Also congrats to Mr. Chad Frazi on his Support Staff Member Award. Congratulations to Ms. April, who's rocking her first year as Principal of the ECC, and congratulations to Ms. Ashton on her promotion to Principal-Elect of ECC in '26, '27 school year. Shout-out to the pre-K and ECC Special Education staff. This person wrote, "The end of the year comes with added paperwork. Thank you for always working hard to complete paperwork and showing up each day for all students." At Franklin, shout-out to Ms. Ramdial for all the hard work and effort she put into organizing the Puppies and Pasta Event. Our families always enjoy this event and it is a great success. Shout-out to the amazing Principal, Mrs. Dean. She is rocking being a new leader. At the high school, shout-out goes to Beth Brunkhorst for organizing the EOC testing schedule. This person wrote, "To the staff that teach while dealing with violent death of former students." Shout-out to Zach Moore for making such an impact on his students during his first year of teaching. His passion for teaching is evident in all he does. Congratulations for organizing and overseeing all the state and AP testing. Another shout-out goes to Patty Wambel for receiving the CHS Leadership Award. At Jefferson, says, "Thanks to the cafeteria staff for doing such an amazing job with field trip lunches. Lots of extra work, but so well organized." Ms. Reese is always going above and beyond for the kindergarten students. She works so hard to ensure most of the kinders are meeting with her throughout the week. We are blessed to have her on our kindergarten team. Huge shout-out to Ms. Baker and Ms. Fisher for our Joy Store, for providing our sped department an unforgettable bus ride to the store to grab goodies. This was unexpected but greatly appreciated. Thanks for, thanks so much for treating us. Shout-out basically to all our staff. This one, you know, came to me, but I'm going to shout out to my staff because of PBL's showcase night we had, it was a great success, I feel like, and this person said they will miss me and I will miss them. Another shout-out at Jefferson goes to Ms. Robin Miller. She is always going above and beyond for our teachers. After she puts in her hours, she sticks around to do special things for our school or help out in any way possible. At the junior high, shout-out At the junior high, shout-out to the junior high sped team for dealing with the three afternoons of transfer conferences at CMS with our team. Your patience and attempt at understanding the few complications was appreciated. Shout-out to Ms. Fleming, our new functional teacher. She was tasked with running that room with a month of school left, and she has done phenomenal. I cannot wait for her to be back with us next year, this person wrote. At the middle school, shout-out to Mr. Wilson. He is wrapping up his first full year with us at CMS, and he has been a truly valuable addition to our team. Consistently demonstrates qualities that are deeply appreciated. He listens attentively, brings a calming presence, and takes thoughtful action when it's needed. These are all essential traits in an administrator, and we're grateful to have him on our team. Shout-out goes to Brooke Deloche and Callie Centers for managing our MAP testing and attempting to make it as seamless as can. Great job, ladies. Another shout-out goes to Kelsey Tushaw for doing the MAP A testing at CMS and the MAP A testing at the junior high. She's done a wonderful job of managing the adults in her classroom as well as her functional students. This person wrote that they feel privileged to be a part of her team. Another shout-out goes to Becky Wright. This person writes, "You are the heart of our school, cheering us on, leading us with kindness, and always going the extra mile for both students and teachers. Whether it's solving problems, supporting dreams, or just making us laugh when we need it most, you do it all with style and heart. We appreciate you more than words can say. Thank you for being awesome every single day." So, thought that was a good one to end on. Real quick, I will let you know that CTA did elect new officers, because as you know, I will not be here, but they're in great hands. I know they will be. Our president next year will be Shannon Burgoff from the middle school. Vice president will be Marsha Medlin, who also works at CMS. The secretary is Candace Hyder, who works at the high school. Treasurer is Tanya Whitehead from Central Middle School, and our membership chair will be Kelly Brunz from Clipper. So, thank you all for everything. I do appreciate it. Do you have any questions for me?
When do you start your new vehicle?
In August.
He's scared to answer.
Whenever I decide to start.
You will be missed around here.
Thank you. Appreciate you all. It's a journey, for sure, the five years I've been here, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
All right, Treasurer and Finance Report. Back to you, Ms. Dudek.
This report is for April. Beginning fund balance, April 1st, 29.2 million. Revenues received were 2.7 for the general fund and expenses of 2.5 million. We transferred a million out to special revenue fund, covers certified staff salaries and benefits, leaving us with an ending fund balance in the general fund of 28.3 million. The cash and investment detail is listed. Those are the banks that hold our money. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Support Services. Wait, did I skip? We missed one. Treasurer, District-Wide Athletics Report. Sorry, my printout and this are different. So, District-Wide Athletics Report.
Mr. Moore is not here today, but we do have two strength training coaches that are going to talk to you a little bit about their program and probably help us get back into shape, maybe, for the summer.
Yeah, so I'm just not putting all this together. We're here because Tyson's not here.
That's right, Mr. Neal.
He didn't tell us that. I was like, I don't feel like we belong here.
That's exactly right.
Like Hans and Franz here.
For those that don't know us, I'm Darren Neils. I'm at Terry W. Kitchen Junior High School. I teach athletic fitness there. I work with our student athletes.
I'm Aaron King. I'm the Strength and Conditioning Coach at the high school. And then, we both work with all of our student athletes, seventh through 12th grade, that have our class, you know, at both buildings. So Aaron's going to talk first about some stuff at the high school, and then I'll talk a little about the junior high.
Yeah, so Tyson kind of just wanted to give you guys a progress check, and I was talking with Coach Neils, and this is actually the first time that we've visited with you guys since this program kind of hit the ground four years ago, which was a perfect time to kind of go back and revisit it. We've made some great strides from year three to year four. And as you can see, the numbers up there, I'm not going to read them off to you, but this was an overall program improvement, so this is all male and female athletes at the high school. We had a, so from last summer to this past spring, we had a 15-pound increase on our, three of our four core movements, bench, hang, clean, and squat, and then a big jump for our trap bar deadlift, nearly 40 pounds. And then, another notable thing, we had three 500-pound squatters and three 600-pound deadlifters, which was pretty cool. In the four years previous, we only had two total in the four years. So three this year was a big accomplishment for the athletes. And then those three 600-pound deadlifters, same situation, we had two in the previous four years as well. So, some, obviously, the kids can hang their hats on, working their tails off. It's always good to see their hard work come to fruition within the numbers. And then, going on down the list, these are just average lifts for, average numbers for each of the lifts. So for a female, the average bench, nine through 12 is 97 pounds, so approaching that 100-pound mark, which is really, really cool, really good for them. The boys approaching the 185 mark. And going down to the deadlift, again, big increase. Our average is 310 pounds, so nearly three plates on each side of the bar, which was really big for us. 200, almost 10 pounds for the females and 365 pounds for the males. So, good stuff that they were able to see and experience themselves doing this past spring. So power index numbers is something that Coach Neils and I have talked about. It's kind of just an overall progression in how we really evaluate an athlete in terms of their strength, their explosiveness, their speed. So for the boys' side, I always like to label it as a 2, 3, 4, so a 200-pound bencher, a 300-pound squatter, and a 400-pound deadlifter. If a, and then for girls, 100-pound bencher, 200-pound squatter, and a 300-pound deadlifter. We really feel like that if an athlete can accomplish those three feats, they're going to be strong enough, per se. So then it's going to come down to honestly, how good of a football player are you? How good of a softball player are you? And be able to accomplish the strength aspect, the explosive aspect of their respective sports. So the numbers in the parentheses are last year's numbers, and then the numbers that are left up are this year's numbers. So a big increase for the boys and the girls. The girls doubled from 100-pound benchers. The boys doubled from 400-pound deadlifters. We went from a 30-inch vertical is kind of our benchmark for the boys. Went from 15 to 50. The girls, a 20-inch vertical, went from 17 to 39. So really, really good stuff, really big numbers for them. And this was certainly our biggest jump for many of the years, from year three to year four, which, you know, as you guys know, running a program, getting it going and stuff, you know, it does take time to see the progression and stuff, and we're really, really seeing that come together now. Okay. And this is just kind of a numbers thing. Coach Neils and I, and Coach Moore's are always talking about the amount of athletes that we do see through a daily basis, and this goes from year one to when I first got here and Coach Neils started running the junior high strength and conditioning program, where you can see we had six total classes all the way going into next year, which will be year five. We just had a, Mr. Beck was talking about Career Ladder. I was able to do an after-school session along with a zero hour this year, so that was just another opportunity for us to get athletes in there and for athletes to come and get their lift in. So we're up to nine sessions that were being ran in the second semester this spring and over 300 kids that I was seeing on a daily basis. So, and Coach Neils is going to tell you the same thing. We've pretty much maxed out our capacity in terms of just having one set of eyes in a class full of students and from an equipment standpoint as well. That's the update from the high school. Pretty proud to be able to present that to you guys. The kids, the kids' hard work is definitely paying off.
And since Coach King talked to you guys so much about everything that the high school that's working, the kids are getting stronger, faster, and stuff, we feel like a big part of that is giving the kids a really good foundation to come in with and giving them a good base to start with. So for instance, this is just the kids at my building, their percentage of increase during just their eighth grade year. So like, the boys' bench press going up about 24%, the girls' bench press, and then so on and so forth. They make a bunch of gains in lower body strength, which is big in their vertical jump and their sprinting ability. And actually, when I first made this bar graph, I started it with their initial seventh grade maxes, and the numbers were so ridiculous, it kind of looked comical, because you get these kids as little scrawny 12-year-olds, and then they leave as like these 14-year-old, you know, post puberty men sometimes. So, this was a better-looking chart, so that's what I went with. But we feel like this base is really important, and it just helps Coach King when the kids get to the high school with that base. So, at the junior high, whoops, at the junior high, I've got eight racks, so three kids per rack. We've got about 24 kids per class. We're pretty well maxed out in terms of the numbers of kids that we can put in there. So with six classes a day, we've got about 144 athletes that can train a day, you know, 24 at a time. In the summer, we might get 60 to 80 kids or more there for a session, so we had to be real creative with how we can train these kids and breaking up the sessions and things like that. Just the junior high numbers at a glance, and this is a lot of Coach Moyers' work that he's been doing for years now. We've seen our student-athlete numbers increase at the junior high, so we had over 250 student athletes this year. We expect that to continue to grow. So we've got a chunk of our kids now that aren't able to get into class, but we do know that class is working and that it's important. So we had mentioned earlier tonight, talking about long-range facility planning. Those are some conversations I've had with Coach Moyers and also Josh Crowell about some solutions and things that we're looking for at the junior high, so more of our kids can have that base and go into all that great stuff that they're doing at the high school. So we just feel like it's working and it's important, and we just want more kids to be a part of it. Last slide, real quick, just a couple things that we also kind of fall under my umbrella at the junior high. We open the weight room in the mornings before school, Tuesday through Friday, all year long. Kids can come in and get extra workouts in, especially if they can't get into the class that semester. We also do ICU at the junior high, so all of the student-athletes, if they're missing any work, they actually come to either myself or to Coach Tuning. She teaches some weights also at the junior high, and they work with us after school, kind of like tutoring. So it keeps all of our student-athletes, I always tell the kids, it puts the student in front of the athlete. It puts the student first. And then we have a true offseason at the junior high where we do some speed training too, in January and February, and that's been a big hit with the kids too. So we're training the kids as much as we can, as often as we can, and things are really rolling right now. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I want to say thank you, because I think more important than your numbers, which are awesome, you know, you're teaching kids and young people how to do things correctly and avoid injury. You're getting their bodies, you know, positive body image and things like that for kids. And maybe more important than all that, I think we've heard the feedback from some of the stuff with trusted adults and things like that, and you guys are touching, you're a part of so many kids' lives who believe in you and...
Both of your names come up so often.
It's awesome. It's awesome. And so know your impact is far beyond the weight room or the athletic playing field, which is by far the most important part. So kudos to you both. Keep doing what you're doing. It's making a huge impact, not only for our teams, but for the young people who are growing up, so.
We appreciate y'all's support.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. We appreciate that.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Baby, my son. No.
My Andrew. Yeah, the, so the paper that you gave them, it's laminated.
That paper. Every student talks about that paper.
He was so proud of that.
100%.
A lot of times, students don't, you know, get that.
So I had to cry in front of all my football fans.
No, I'm like...
Great job.
And now for exciting stuff.
MSBA report.
Advocacy platform.
How would you guys bench press?
It's going way up.
It keeps getting heavier every year. We don't have a new draft, so that the summer MSBA conference is in June, which will be before our next board meeting. I went through all the emails and everything to see if there's a draft or an idea of what we're going to be discussing there. I haven't found one, but I would encourage you guys to go take a look at last year's advocacy platform, which was approved in October, and you can go to the MSBA website to see that without even logging into it. As soon as I get more information or find more information about what they're looking at for their platform for the coming year, in the June meeting, we will have drafts of stuff, and we will work through that and then vote. And then, in the fall conference, then that will be solidified. So I will get you guys information as soon as I can find some information to share with you, to give feedback, and I'll take that forward.
That's awesome.
Legislative report.
That would be me. Okay, four things I wanted to talk about. First of all, actually, really, first of all, five things, not four things. The session is over. We are done with the 2025, '24 to '25 session. Any bills have either been passed or they're dead, and so now things are sitting on the governor's desk to see how they will move forward. So that's kind of the status of things at the Missouri Capitol. So first of all, open enrollment is dead for this session, so hallelujah. One of the things that, one of the emails that I get talked about was, a lot of times when you look back on the legislative session, you don't always judge your successes by the things that pass. Oftentimes, your successes are actually the things that did not pass, and this is a great example of that. The continued discussions with our legislators about how open enrollment really is detrimental to our public schools is effective, and we're seeing that it is effective in the fact that even though it was a priority for the governor, once again, it still did not pass. So that's great news for us. Second is SB 68. This is a bill that passed. It started as a cellphone restriction bill. Dr. Beck, is this the one that you testified on? That was the one that, I thought that it was the same one. Okay, so this did pass, but it kind of grew into an omnibus bill, meaning several other things got added on. Two that I wanted to point out that are positive for us is, one, 169-day calendar fix. That is officially fixed now, so we don't have to worry about what kind of days we're using next year. And second, substitute teaching after retirement. Those limits were set to expire this June, and it has been waived now and extended to June of 2030. So that is great for our teachers that come back after retirement and help us with substituting. Next, the budget. So the budget passed the Senate and the House, which means it now moves to the governor. It is there waiting for him to sign or veto by July 1st, which is when the deadline is. Good news is that public schools did end up to be fully funded, which is great for our value. What is, I'm blanking on that word right now. Our ADA. Yes, exactly. I had spoken several times about how we were 300 million short on a state level, and that is no longer the case, as long as the governor signs it. Bad news is that 50 million was designated to help pay tuition at private and parochial schools, which will mark the first time in history that public money is used for private schools. So it will be interesting to see how that moves forward for us. Last thing I wanted to talk about is actually at a federal level, not a state level, but there is a Supreme Court case that has already been heard. Without getting into a lot of the details, it is a case out of Oklahoma that will determine if public education funds can be used for private and religious-based schools. St. Isidore is a religious charter school that is involved in this case, and if they prevail, then it could potentially upend how schools are funded currently. The case has been heard, like I said, by the Supreme Court. Typically, Supreme Court releases their decisions in late June, early July. So maybe by the next meeting we have, we'll know how that case is being decided. It could be July, but that will definitely be something to kind of keep an eye on. That's all I got.
Questions?
She's got a career in journalism, I feel, honestly.
Not journalism, but the legislative side. So interesting.
Crystal fish for our president. I don't know. This is, the campaign starts here.
She made the legislative interesting.
Didn't she?
All right, Public Schools Foundation. Ms. McDonald.
Since January, the Cape Public School Foundation has made a significant impact across the district. We have served over 8,584 students and 1,224 staff supported. We have funded over $119,953 worth of... We have funded over $119,953 worth of services, which is like, when I added that up today, I had to double check and that's extremely exciting. We provided 14 Cape Central High School scholarships, totally nearly $20,000. Programs we've impacted since January is the Cape Central Score Table, JE Joy Store. We have helped with the joy stuff that's going on. Esports Team, Tiger Lily, Care to Learn, Cub Club, Beta Club, Senior All Night Party, FBLA, CTC Welding Program, Central Academy Senior Book Startup at the Central Middle School Media Club. And then we've had some student and staff needs that we've supported. Two of our major funding grants that weren't provided in that $119,953 is 22,975 from the mental health grant for the Community Foundation of the OSARs, $5,000 for the Rising Educator Grant. That's going to provide us, supports our students pursuing careers in education by providing five paid internships to Cape Central seniors, or high school students. We have held our annual golf tournament on May 12th. We had 144 golfers and a huge thank you to all of our event sponsors and host sponsors, our host sponsors that came out for the day. They enhanced our experience. It was a fantastic day of networking fun and sharing our mission with the community. Updating dates of event, July 11th, Friday. The foundation and alumni association will partner with Cape Central Booster Club and host an alumni supporter mix and mingle. That will be held on the veranda. We will be providing advertisers by Dr. John Johnson Memorial Fund. And we're looking for music, so we are hoping to have it go from four to close the country club. So, it would be, come out and leave. If you golf, you can go home, shower and come back. But we will have advertisers at that event and cash bar. Save the day, Saturday, February 14th will be our annual Penguin Party event. We already have our band, The Remedies, coming in town from Nashville. Awkward Timing will be back as our cocktail and social hour band. Monday, May 11th of '26 will be our foundation and alumni association golf tournament. And we are so proud and excited to continue to support this district and community with academic opportunities, extracurricular activities and enrich the educational experience and overall health and wellness of our district. So, thank you for having me. That was a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my office. Thank you for accommodating me. I received a $2,000 check to add to the scholarship fund, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, approval of consent to gen items. So, these were all sent out there in the board packet. We'll play a chance to go through them. We've got minutes from April 28th, 2025 meeting, the payment of bills, board meeting dates for '25-'26. Make sure you update your calendars.
Be smart like Jared and take a picture of it right now, guys.
The '26-'27 academic calendar, also look for your days off. And DESI 2025 Summer School Application. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, we had Jared and Lynn on that. Many questions, discussions on any of those? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, those carry. Next up, we have our business. So, our first one up, approval to proceed with the next phase of recovery high school program. We met with this just prior in our special session and we're going to request to table this one for some more information. So, we can have some more discussions about it, learn more on it and bring it back up next meeting and we might even have a meeting in between here and then, just to educate all of us, so we can all learn more about this opportunity. Next up, approval, and my computer quit.
Do we need a motion to?
Do we need a motion to move that? All right, can we get a motion to table the approval to proceed with the next phase of recovery high school program?
So moved.
Second.
Jared and Dr. Ware. No.
He'll take it. I'm working on that. I'm working on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, approval, let me see if my, this will, so I can read it. Oh, you did. All right, so next up, approval to '25-'26 salary schedules. So, we met in the special session and Ms. Dudek went over those with us and we kind of went through all those. The recommendation is to adopt the salary schedules as presented for the '25-'26 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, Dr. Fegley, Mr. Ritter, any questions or discussions on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that one carries. Next up, nutrition services dairy products bid. So, the recommendation is to authorize the superintendent or designate and negotiate a contract with Prairie Farms and to execute the contract on behalf of the board for milk and ice cream. The contract is for one year, '25-'26 school year, with the option to extend up to three one-year extensions, '26-'27, '27-'28 school year and '28-'29 school year.
So moved.
Thanks, sir. Second?
Second.
Dr. Fegley, Mr. Ritter, any questions, comments on that one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one carries. Next up, nutrition services food and kitchen supplies bid. Wish Mr. Crowell was here to give us more elucidation on these. So, the recommendation to authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate a contract with Gold Star Foods and to execute the contract on behalf of the board for food and supplies. Contracts for one year, '25-'26 school year, with the option to extend up to three one-year extensions, '26-'27 school year, '27-'28 school year and '28-'29 school year. You get a motion?
Second.
Jared, Ms. Ware, any questions or comments?
Gold Star Foods still carries Crispitos, I assume.
That's why you jumped onto that, wasn't it?
I think it's a fair question.
It is a fair question. We will have a revolt.
Yeah, can we phone Mr. Crowell?
He used to report on Crispito numbers, so.
If not, there might be a bid later.
Could be a separate standalone?
I might abstain until we know.
Table that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one carries. Next up, nutrition services commodities bid. To authorize, so the recommendation is authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate a contract with Gold Star Foods. Did I notice, is this the same? Nope.
No, it's different, but it's the same.
And to execute the contract on behalf of the board for net off invoice commodity food products. Contracts for one year, '25-'26 school year, with the option to extend up to three one-year extensions, '26-'27 school year, '27-'28 school year and '28-'29 school year. Get a motion. Okay.
Second.
Jared, Dr. Fegley, any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one carries. And last up, approval of cooperative sponsorship proposal CJHS and St. Mary Cathedral School. So, the quick summary here is to approve a cooperative athletic opportunity for junior high age students at St. Mary's, a parochial K8 institution within the boundaries of Cape Girardeau Public School District. Representatives from St. Mary have already approved the cooperative proposal and St. Mary's is already registered as a MSHA affiliate. So, did we already have one of these set up with which schools right now?
Trinity.
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 Is this not a continuation? Right there, sir?
This is just an added, for St. Mary's.
I know it is added.
Yeah. A local, we remember we decided we were only doing within our community.
Just within the district.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other questions, comments?
So, do they come to us and ask if we're willing to do that? They do.
Yeah, they make a request to Tyson.
I see, okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one also carries. Okay, last up, information and proposals from board members. Do I have anything for the good of the board?
I just want to thank all of our administrators, cabinet, staff, principals and everyone that has done such a great job this school year. It's hard to believe that May is here and this is our last meeting for Terrific Tigers. Kind of going to miss that for a few months here, but just want to say thank you to everybody for all their hard work and making it yet again a successful school year. And Ms. Nancy Scheller, we will miss you. Thank you for everything you've done as well. And again, thank you, everybody.
I presume you'll keep coming to this board meeting.
If you do, we're going to have real questions.
I hope not.
Don't forget, you can substitute for us.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will reconvene, break recess upstairs.
Thank you, guys.